Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And this is Thursday, December 16th of 2021. Welcome, everyone. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. We could. I pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation under God. In liberty, justice for all. Thank you. So let's quickly take attendance here. We've got Dana Peterson. Annie Bane. We've got Howard Burgess, Jerry Sterns. And Mary Beth Holy. So there and myself. So there are six. Regular commissioners.
I also am here.
Oh, there you are. Okay, Sherman. So seven.
I don't see Jerry. Right here.
He's present.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so everyone is present. So just the regular members will be voting tonight on items. Let's move to the agenda and approval of the agenda. We can take off the Velco subdivision. They are all set and that's. That real estate deal is ready to resume and the project will be underway shortly. So we can take that off. Anything? Anything else about the agenda?
I move that we accept it as modified.
Second.
Thank you, Sherman and Dana. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. And still no public there, Bill?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll move on to our guest presenter tonight. Who is Sam Carlson and he's with Grandpa's Knobs Community Wind Project. Which is actually based in Castleton, right? The tower. But it will be a fairly tall wind turbine and will be seen by other towns. So Sam. Let's, let's hear your presentation and we'd love to have the opportunity to ask you some questions afterwards.
Sure.
So we'll. Let Sam share his screen.
Okay, can folks see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. So this will be maybe. Thirteen, fourteen minutes depending on how long I drone on. If I start seeing people fall asleep, I'll try to accelerate, but. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you our Community Wind Project. I was pleased that Barbara reached out to me after our presentation to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Last month to be able to talk with you all about it. So just jumping right in, why are we doing this project? Really, three reasons. The first is to honor the history of Grandpa's Knob, which is where the world's first. Megawatt size wind turbine was connected to the electrical grid 80 years ago. That places the town of Castleton as the, the birthplace of the global wind industry. And quite frankly, six months ago, I didn't know that myself. I didn't know that Vermont was the place and I didn't know that Castleton was the place. So that's, that's really the, you know, the driving reason to do this there on Grandpa's Knob is because this is where. It all first began. Secondly, we want to generate shared economic benefits for the surrounding communities and for the project investors for at least 20 years. Hopefully more. And thirdly, to generate environmental benefits in the form of reduced greenhouse gas emissions. That are part of Vermont's Global Warming Solutions Act, all designed to mitigate climate change. Just some basic facts about Grandpa's Knob. It, Community Wind, this is a single turbine. We know that all of the towns went through a rather agonizing experience back in 2012 when a developer was proposing 20 wind turbines along that. Northern Teconic Mountain Ridge Line. This is not that. This is a single turbine, 1.5 megawatts. The turbine tower is just under 300 feet high. And then there are three blades each of which is 143 feet long. So the total height. From the base to the very top tip of the blade would be 438 feet. We would place that turbine. About 110 feet in elevation lower than the Knob to the northwest. So it's not right on the ridge. It's actually down over the ridge towards Castleton, towards Lake Bomassine on the west side. Then placing it about 1,000 feet to the northwest of, of the existing. 300 foot high communications tower. So there's already a 300 foot tower up there. When you incorporate that elevation and the total height of the turbine, they're basically the same total height. At the elevation, you'll see that in the visual simulations. Generation, we expect to be about four million kilowatt hours a year. We started doing community outreach as soon as the state of Vermont informed us that we were likely to win a standard offer contract. We've held meetings with select boards in the surrounding towns with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. I was at. Castleton on Tuesday night with the planning commission. We've got a meeting upcoming with the Lake Bomassine Association. And let me just say, you know, who, who's behind this project? Cause folks want to know, well, who is it? Are these out of state carpetbaggers or, you know, are these Vermonters? And, and we are all Vermonters. The primary investor is David Blittersdorf, who grew up in Pittsburgh. Our environmental specialists are out of Huntington, Vermont. Our civil engineers are out of Colchester. The landscape architects are out of Essex. Our lawyers from Castleton. So, and this is a Vermont project and the electricity would be sold to Vermont Utilities. It would not be sold out of state. It's sold as part of the standard offer program that is under the Public Utility Commission. So let's talk about impacts. What happens if we actually get this project permitted? And I'll go into the timeline in a moment. Well, first off. The original road that was built for Grandpa's Knob. Wind turbine back in 1941 is still there and I went up it in October. You can drive up it in a. In a pickup or a SUV. It's, it needs a little work. There's one turn that's sort of a hairpin turn that needs a little bit of widening, but the road is actually in really good condition, heavily compacted. And there are already power lines that go up to the existing communications tower. So we don't have to cut down any trees. We don't have to threaten any habitat because the road is already built and the power lines. Are built. Right at the site, we have to build a concrete pad to, to affix the tower to. That would be about 20 square yards. We have to do a geotechnical assessment come January, that's scheduled now to analyze the rock and get a sense of, well, where is exactly the. You know, that we have to get down to raw rock, not be on the, on the crumbly crust. Would need to clear about an acre of vegetation for construction purposes because we've got to get a crane in there. And the trucks have got to be able to turn around after which that would all re-vegetate. But perhaps most importantly, we, you know, we've been in touch with the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources about the project. Meeting scheduled with them on January 24th. And basically they're going to tell us what we have to do. In terms of environmental impact assessment and we have to go do that. So that's sort of what we know at this time about expected environmental impacts. Expected visibility. We have, I'm going to share with you two. View sheds. One's a five mile view shed. One's a 10 mile view shed. For, for Rutland Town, right? You're actually beyond the five mile view shed. So you're, you're not. You're not going to see Rutland Town in the five mile. We'll get to the 10 mile. The five mile view shed, because the turbine is, is on the northwest side of the Knob. The primary visibility is to the west along Hubbardton Road and Lake Bomassine. And on the east side from Pittsburgh, around Route 7, Cornhill Road. Now I'll show you all that in just a second. But I do also want to highlight for any of you who really want to get into this more and, and have time with it. We have uploaded the view sheds as well as seven different visual renderings that I'll go through rather quickly here. But these are all available on our website. You can go onto the website. You can click on visual simulations. You can download them as PDFs. So we're trying to be as transparent as we can be about what this thing is going to look at, look like from different views. So this is the five mile view shed. Here's the project site right in the middle. You sort of see that as, as the bullseye. Is that, is that coming clear to, to everyone on, on your computers?
Yes.
Great. So each one of these yellow rings is one mile. So in each of these purple areas where you see purple is where. The turbine hub, meaning that that 300 foot height can be seen. And if you can see the hub, you can see the blades, right? Where it is light pink. Down here, say in the West Rutland Marsh, you see that's a lighter shade of pink. They cannot see the hub or the turbine tower, but they could see the very top tips of the blades. Okay. So they can't see the tower. They could see the blades. So you can see here wherever you see purple. That's where folks could see. The entire turbine tower and the blades. So again, you see over Pitt and Pittsburgh Route 7, Cornhill Road. Hubbardton Road, Hubbardton Battlefield is up there. We're going to, I'll show you a simulation in a second. Now let's jump to the 10 mile. And if I can, I'm going to try to do this off of my. PDF that will let me zoom in. Okay. To Rutland. Can folks see that now? I'm zoomed in on Rutland?
You're zoomed in. It's not zoomed in.
No.
Nothing changed.
Nothing changed.
Nothing changed. Interesting. Okay. Well, then I will go back to this and let me. I'm going to have to go to, my screen's going to go blank. I'm going to go to just a, a different setup that I can. I can zoom in on. This. Can folks see that now?
You're not presenting.
Yet. Nope.
No. Okay.
Presenting right now.
Okay. Then I gotta, I, I'm just going to have to go back to the slideshow and then I will. These. The 10 mile view shed map, I sent that down to. To Bill and Barbara, and this is also downloadable. I was just trying to be able to zoom in here and I obviously I can't do that in PowerPoint. But so we're back to presentation mode. Can you all see that now?
No, you're not presenting.
This is very strange. Am I on?
Not yet.
It's the same thing that happened when you tried to. Present the PDF. It didn't, you didn't click on the PDF or show the screen. Now it's zoomed.
There we go.
We go.
Okay.
It zoomed in nicely, Sam.
Okay, okay. So. We're zoomed in on Rutland. So you have to imagine that project site. Let me just. I've got a hot thing here, right? So we've got the project site up here. Each one of these is a mile. One, two, three, four, five, six. We get to up here. Around the six and a half mile mark. Right? There are a couple of views up here. Up here on, what is that? That's post-road extension. Very tip up there. There's some views. And then. Lower down. Right? Again, wherever you see purple. There would be. Views of, you wouldn't, obviously you wouldn't see the base of the tower because that's over on the other side of the ridge. But the, the top of the hub would be seen and the blades could be seen from six to eight miles away.
Sam, while you have this zoomed in.
Yep.
The circles and the numbers, those are simulations.
Those are places that TJ Boyle took photos from. And then we took a selection of those numbers, including one from Boardman Hill Road that I will now show you. So we have not done. Thirty different simulations because that's an extremely expensive proposition. We've done seven simulations and I'm going to show you those now. Okay, let me see if I can. Can people see this now?
You're still zoomed.
Still showing the zoom map.
Okay. Second, let me get. Screen share, new share. Understand why that isn't. I'm just trying to get. Back to. PowerPoint. It says I'm screen sharing. You can't see anything?
We can see, we see the map that's zoomed in. You have to change your window or your document that you're presenting.
Right.
So I think if you click on present, you should be able to select a different option, but I don't know that for a fact.
Yep. Okay. Well, I'm going to try to do a. Share screen. Okay, this is going to work.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So. Let's get a little more specific on the visualization. So I'm on Boardman Hill Road here. So I'm down. If you see this yellow spot, that's where this photo was taken from. Down in the, in the southern part of town, right? Looking to the northwest up towards the project site. Okay, so this white dotted rectangle. Is now what we're going to sort of zoom in on because that's the knob up there. Okay? So that would be the view from Boardman Hill Road. And it's very hard to see, isn't it? It's right in there. And I'm going to go to the next slide, which is a zoom. So here is the existing communications tower. Right? That's there on the knob. What you see here is the tip of the blade. There's the hub right there at the ridge line. So what you would see from Boardman Hill Road, if this is operating, is you would see the sweep of the blade. Right? Going around. There were, there are three blades and this, this, right? This would be moving. Right? If this, if this was operating. So again. Yep.
Um, this is a tracking turbine, right? It'll move with the wind direction.
Correct. Yeah, it faces into the wind. Yeah.
Does that change the view at all?
So it's a good question. So this assumes that you're looking at it at a, sort of at a 90 degree angle. So this is as mo, as much view as you would have. If, if the wind was coming. 90 degrees off of this, you would only, you, those blades would just look like a single blade, right? You, you wouldn't see them spinning. This, this is assuming that. You, you would see that full sweep. So yeah, there would be different angles of, of the blades. This particular shot is, is sort of assuming that. The, the blades and the whole tower is, is facing Boardman Hill Road. Okay, so again, that's, that's what you would see from, you know, you're, you're seven miles away. So. It's, it's normal that it's, it's hard to see. That's zoomed in. From Pomainville Wildlife Management Area, I'll go through these more quickly because these are not in Rutland Town. You can just see there. The turbine. You can see the very top of the hub and you can see the three blades and next to it, the communications tower. Uh, we took a shot from Lake Bomassine, the Kehoe access point. Right? We're looking up to Grandpa's Knob here. We're about four and a half miles away. And again, it's hard to see because it's white and you're going up against the sky. So it doesn't stand out quite as much actually as the communications tower does where my cursor is going. And this is, there's the turbine right there. Now from the Hubbardton Battlefield, which is obviously a big concern for the town of Hubbardton. This is from about three miles away, right? We're going to look at this white triangle, a white rectangle. And there, there's a, there's a. Pretty full on view of, of the turbine there. Okay?
Because that would be on the west of the town is on the western side of that ridge.
Exactly. So the, the Castleton and Hubbardton, they can see from the base of the turbine tower plus all the blades. Charlie Brown's Farm Stand. This is now about five miles away. Here's the turbine here. And just to the right of it is the communications tower. Uh, and this is just to give you a sense for, this is from Pittsburgh Park, right across from Kamutas. And it's just to make the point that can't be seen from there. There. So you can peer as much as you want, but. Just the way that topography is, can't be seen from Kamuta. So it's just a, it's a spot that people know about. So just to try to go through the rest of this, where are we in terms of our timeline? Uh, we just signed the standard offer contract with the Public Utility Commission. Technically VEPi, which is an entity that runs the standard offer program for the Public Utility Commission. We just signed that last week. That establishes a fixed price. 11.6 cents a kilowatt hour for the next 20 years. And just to be very clear, the contract is not a permit from the state of Vermont. All it is, is a promise by the state of Vermont. That if we get a permit and if we get the project financed and built, then we have a guaranteed buyer of the electricity. And it's that guaranteed buyer in the form of the Vermont Utilities that allows us to go ahead now and spend the next year. Doing the detailed studies and preparing for the certificate of public good. So we have to do the analysis of environmental impact. In accordance with the Agency of Natural Resources guidelines, we have to do sound impact study, more visual impact. We have to do that geotechnical assessment of the knob itself, looking at the rock. Do we, how, what kind of concrete pad or can we actually, you know, drill into the, into the rock? We have to do a system impact study with Green Mountain Power to make sure we can integrate with the grid. And of course, there are the federal infrastructure bills under consideration in Congress right now. Build Back Better. If that gets passed in anything like its current form, that could significantly enhance the project economics and the potential for revenue sharing. With the community, but we don't know what the results are of that right now. We hope a year from now to submit our application for the certificate of public good to the Public Utility Commission. And then it's another year of hearings and comments at the state level and, and I'm sure local folks will enter. Want to be part of that process as well. So that's probably a year long thing as well. So we're probably two years from any decision, be my guess. So just three frequently asked questions. You know, some folks say, well, one turbine might be okay, but you know. Will this single turbine create a precedent for a much larger multi turbine project on that ridge line? That's, that's a, that's a valid fear and that, that's kind of bringing back, you know, what happened back in 2012 when the towns all had to work together and. Fight that 20 turbine development. Well, in 2012, the Agency of Natural Resources issued a letter. To that turbine developer saying. That that mountain range has got exceptional ecological values, irreplaceable and rare habitat and would not get a permit. From A and R and so would not get a permit from the Public Utility Commission. And that was ultimately the, the killer blow and why that developer went away. So A and R has made its position quite clear. It will not support any kind of multi turbine project, whether the local community supports it or opposes it. We certainly will include in our application as a condition of a CPG that none of us. Project investors, anyone involved in the project would be. Proposing any additional project on that ridge line. That's about as far as, as much as we can do. Quickly now, you know, folks have asked us, well, if you want to honor history and honor Palmer Putnam, why don't you put up a marble statue in Castleton and, and call it good? And you know, we believe that a living monument is much more powerful in the form of an operating turbine than. A marble's monument. We also think that what an operational wind turbine can do is generate economic and environmental benefits. That a simple monument could never do. And we do hope to establish. An interpretive center where we can, we're in the process of digitizing old videos and photos and memorabilia from the original Grandpa's Knob and, and try to establish. Castleton and as, as the birthplace of, of the. Global wind industry. And finally. You know, lots of, lots of towns where I've been, you know, people say, well, look at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission plan. Look at the town plans in, in Castleton or in West Rutland. Don't we understand that the town plans prohibit industrial and commercial wind projects? And the answer is yes, we do understand that. We have read all the town plans in the Rutland Regional Planning Commission plan. We think this particular project complies with those plans. This is not an industrial wind project of multi turbines. In a way that Georgia Mountain, Lowell, Sheffield, Sears-Burke, those are all multi turbine project. We're talking about a single. And relatively small turbine, 1.5 megawatt. This is not a commercial. Wind project whose aim is to maximize profits. We're talking about. Sharing as much of the revenue as we can after we cover our costs with the surrounding community. And we've shared with Castleton some initial projections about what that revenue sharing would, would look like. If we can operate this over 20, 25 years, that's in the neighborhood of, it's between $2 and $3 million, depending a little bit on what comes out. Of the Build Back Better Infrastructure Bill. We're not sighted on an undeveloped ridge line. We're on an already developed site with a 300 foot communications tower right next to it. We're not threatening any forests or rare habitats or pristine view sheds because it uses an existing power line and road. So it, the fact that, you know, it's a little bit steep getting up there. It, it really should not cause any. Environmental issues on that front. So we actually think we, we comply with the plans. So I'll stop there. Thank you very much. What questions, concerns you have? Happy to address them. So I will turn it back over. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sam. Any questions from the commissioners? Well, I've got some. On, on the zoomed in map that you showed for the 10 miles out. It looked like there was actually some darker, dark purple areas. That were larger than Boardman Hill. In southeastern Rutland Town, maybe even the city. And I think they were. Numbers 18 and 19. So why didn't, why don't we have simulations of those?
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a good question. I would have to go back to TJ Boyle. They did a, we had a meeting. We went through all the photographs and we thought the Boardman Hill. One was the quote, most problematic that people would be most. uh, one was the quote, "most problematic," that people would be most interested in. Um, I can go back, uh, to TJ Boyle and get, uh, to see if we can get a simulation prepared, uh, from there if you'd like, and I can send that out to you. It, it might take a couple of weeks, but because these things are done, they're, they're highly technical in terms of the, the, the sort of the, the software that gets used to actually simulate this thing at the right scale and the right spot. Um, so that's all I can tell you is that, you know, we were trying to pick the areas that would be most relevant and of most concern, and that's, that's what was agreed on.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great if you could do that. Um, terrain-wise, terrain, I'm saying, um, it, you know, over in that part of town, it's, it's a little bit higher and it overlooks, um, you know, that range and Grandpa's Knob. So I, I assume that's why there's more purple there. Um, so you, you really described well to us what can be seen in the daylight. Um, what about at night? When, um, when everything is lit up on the turbine?
Yep. So, um, at night, just like there is on the communications tower now, right? There's a, there's a red light, uh, that flashes to keep planes from flying into it. Um, the, uh, so there would be a similar night lighting. Um, we're looking into, uh, you know, the big offshore wind projects, and I was looking at those. They have sound sensors and that the lights are off, but when they hear an airplane coming, the lights come on. Um, and we're looking into whether we can do that or not. We don't know if that's allowed in Vermont yet. We don't know how that technology, it's, it's a relatively new technology, if we can do that. If we can figure out a way to not have a light and have it be sound triggered and it lights up when they know that a plane is coming, that's great. Um, I don't know if we're going to be able to do that or not. Um, I think it's also, uh, and I'm not a bird, an avian specialist. I think the lights are also important so that birds don't fly into it at night. And so if we didn't have the light on, then there could be a risk of bird fatalities. So it would be a, it would be a, a light that would be a flashing light that is focused horizontally and up as opposed to going down, right? It, it has a, it has like a shade on it, so the light isn't angled down, but it's going out in the up.
With the blades going around, um, isn't, won't that be a different kind of light than just the communications tower is, you know, the steady red light now?
So the, the light, as, as I understand it, the light would be on the hub, right? So at the top of the tower and the blades are coming into the hub, right? Um, so the, but the, the blades aren't, uh, the blades are outside of the hub.
So there'd be no difference in what it looks like from the communications tower at night?
Uh, I don't, I don't want to answer that question because I don't know. Um, I, and I, I'd, I'd like you to give me the chance to find that out, e- exactly what it would look like at, at night. Um, I, 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 I don't know.
Okay. I ask because that would probably be the biggest impact for, uh, Rutland Town and, you know, this, this area.
Yep.
Um, you know, it looks like the city, maybe Wallingford, um, might, there's some purple down there, maybe some in Mendon. Uh, maybe some in Chittenden, I think I saw.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah.
No, that's a, that's a fair question. Hasn't been asked before and I don't know the answer to it. Um, so let me find that out and I will send you and, and Bill an email back with, uh, what I can find out and you can share.
I, I heard.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yes, um, it, it surprises me some that, uh, Clarendon, um, as far as I can tell, is not on your, your list of, uh, towns that may have concerns.
Uh, we have focused on the towns that are within the five-mile, uh, view shed, to be, to be honest, because they're the ones who are really going to be most impacted. Uh, that's, it's just the closer you are to it, the, the.
Well, there's part of Clarendon that comes right into West Rutland's backyard.
Yeah, but West Rutland really can't see it either. They can see the top tips of the blades from the Rutland Marsh, um, but they can't, uh, really see the, they can't see the tower. They can see the top maybe 10 meters from a, uh, of, of the blades from, uh, a couple of spots in West Rutland. Um, but I certainly don't have any, you know, we've been making the rounds initially to the surrounding towns. And, you know, we're, I, I'm, I'm happy to reach out to Clarendon and, and talk with them. There's, it, it's.
Well, it surprised me a little bit that they weren't on the list. Um, so the other thing that I had, not particularly, um, pertinent to any one town, but, uh, the way the valleys and the topography of, uh, some of those ravines go and everything, what about night noise? Now, noise travels, uh, is much more prominent at night than it is in the daytime. Is, is that blade activity going to create any difference in, uh, noise patterns?
Right. So, um, two things. First is that Vermont has very strict sound regulations for wind turbines and they're different for daytime and nighttime.
Right.
And they are, uh, established at the, uh, basically at, at the property line of the closest landowner. And, uh, there's a certain decibel level that's allowed during certain hours of the day and another decibel level that's allowed at other hours of the day, taken at, at the property line. We have not done the sound impact analysis yet. That's something that we have to do over the next couple of months. We have to work with Goldwind, uh, who is the manufacturer of the turbine and, and do that analysis. So, um, we have to comply with Vermont's quite stringent sound, uh, restrictions. That's all I can say is that we will comply with what the law is. Um, I, I know that the decibel level, uh, is approximately, I think it's 42 or 43 decibels is what is permitted. And we're probably talking at around 60 decibels now. Um, so, uh, just to put something in, in context, but we, we have to address that and, and that's something obviously we will be sharing with folks, putting it up on the website as, as we do the analysis.
Okay.
Norm?
I had two questions, if I may. Um, with respect to the purple areas in the southwest corner of town, uh, Mr. Carlson, I, I think there's more than one. Am I correct? Barbara, and he only responded with respect to one. I, is that all you're concerned about? Uh, or did I misunderstand the placement?
Um, in the southeastern part of the town, in the eastern part of the town?
I thought it was the southwestern you were referring, referred to, not, not the southeast.
It was over near the hospital and Cold River Road and, and the, the, those areas.
Okay. Was there only one purple area? I thought there was more than one and, yeah. And were you only interested in one? Cause that's what he responded to. And I just wondered if there was a breakdown between the two of you, not suggesting it was deliberate, but.
I don't know. I, I think my, my question was answered.
I, I think what, what Barbara was saying is that we only did one visual simulation, uh, in Rutland Town. Um, and she was asking, can we do another visual simulation from those other purple areas that are sort of designated of 18 and 19 on that, uh, 10-mile view shed map? And I will look into that and see if we can get that done.
Well, I, I may have misunderstood the exchange. I thought she had only referred to one and not, not the other one. Well, thank you. Um, I had something about sound, but it's left me for a moment. So if it comes back, I'll.
I'll have to do.
So, yeah, Sam, given the sensitivity to, you know, wind turbines, um, five-mile distance may not be enough. You know, that's not a question, maybe more of a comment.
I got a couple of questions, Barbara, too.
Jerry's got questions.
I got some questions, Barbara.
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
So I, you, you spoke of the investors. Kind of early on, you said investors are all, everybody's in Vermont. Was it investors or was it just people working on it? Because you mentioned the engineers and landscapers, and that's great that you're going to hire local people, but who's investing in it? Just Mr. Blittersdorf?
He is the primary investor, yes, through his.
There is some out-of-state investors or?
Uh, no, we'll be using a Vermont bank and we haven't selected the bank yet because no bank is going to talk to us until we've done all the analysis that we have to do, um, before they can figure out whether it's a bankable project yet. But it'll be a Vermont bank that we work with and it's Blittersdorf who'll be investing, uh, his own money in this project.
How about the, the, no improvements to the, uh, Green Mountain Power line that runs up there?
We, we don't, yeah, well, as, as my slideshow said, we have to string one additional line, uh, to, to handle the turbine and that would be obviously at, at our expense, the.
Well, how big is that?
Well, it's just a regular three-phase line. I mean, the, the poles and the cross trees already are there and they're in good shape. They're servicing the communications tower now.
But there's a, but there would be a size. Is it a, is it size, the size of a distribution line? Is it bigger? Is it a transmission size?
No, it's a distribution size.
And how about, um?
That, that, well, let me, let me back up. Um, Green Mountain Power is going to tell us what line that has to be, right? Uh, not me. So our understanding is we need to add one more distribution line and then those lines will be perfectly fine to handle the 1.5 megawatts.
But that's all, but, but those lines are only being sized to handle 1.5 megawatt. You're not going to oversize them.
Correct.
That's true. Okay. Then, uh, another question I had was, uh, or, or maybe a statement more than anything else is that I think that we all sitting here could see that if you look through the lens of a camera and look at the distance, I, I've, I've lived here my whole life and Grandpa's Knob is a prominent, prominent piece in a lot of areas. Part of it Rutland Town, part of it the city, um, Pittsburgh. I've grown up in this whole area like many of us have. Those pictures are so skewed for what we're actually going to be looking at. I would love to see an actual, it, it, that isn't even close, I gotta tell you. That, that tower from Coal River Road is so prominent, it's there. I realize your tower's over the back, but since a great deal of that's going to be above that ridge, kind of equal to at that height, the tower that's there. I, I, I really wish you could come up with some more accurate photos because I think it's misleading. I, I don't know that it's intentional. I'm just, it, it's not even close to what's going to be shown there. And I mean, that's, that's a fact. I think we're all sitting here, well, if you, if you bring those pictures up again, I think we could all pretty much say that is really not how that's going to look up there. It's going to be a huge prominent picture on the side of that hill. And you know, so one of the things that these guys get sick of me probably hearing me talk about is, you know, the really only industry we have in the state of Vermont that's huge industry is tourism. So now you take that turbine, you put it on a, we, we are the Green Mountain State. You stick that turbine up on the side of that hill. I'm just, I, I, in my opinion, it's, it's, it's a wrong, it's a wrong spot for it. But, um, anyway, um, and as far as the flashing light, I think you answered my question there. That was, that's at the hub. It's not at the tips of the blades.
Correct, correct. And, and I would, uh, encourage you to go to the website and look at the qualifications and credentials of TJ Boyle, uh, the folks who prepared those simulations. Um, uh, I, I think it is actually quite accurate. Um, that's, that's my.
It may be accurate, but at least, at least the pictures you've shown, even when you zoom them in, I think we all know that since we've lived here, um, and, and perhaps you have your whole life as well. I'm not saying you haven't, but, um, when you stand on, when you stand at, for instance, at Hubbard's and you look to Grandpa's Knob, you can see that, that whole tower in very, very obvious range. When you look at that picture you showed from a simp, from, from even, uh, Coraline Road, I gotta tell you, that's, it's out of scale terrible. Um, and that's, that's a fact. I'm not, I'm not questioning his qualifications. It's, it's out of scale and I, I apologize for, for saying that that's the case, but it is.
It, it's kind of like the difference, Sam, between what you see with your eyes and what you see through a camera lens.
Exactly. Thank you. Exactly. Um, take a picture of us standing here with, with a camera. We do it every year for our town report. And standing here looking, I can see everybody is plain as day. You see that picture. We all fit in that one picture and we're withdrawn. And that's exactly what that photo is kind of showing. It's showing a withdrawn back in the background. It's simply not going to be the case.
You know, I, 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 I can't pull a rabbit out of the hat. A visual simulation comes from taking a photo and then working with the computer, looking exactly at the GPS location of the turbine tower, looking exactly at the height of the turbine tower and the blades relative to the existing communications tower. I'm telling you, that scale relative to the communications tower is accurate. I, the difference between a photo and an eye, I'm, I, I, I don't know how to respond exactly to that.
Well, I think everybody.
We're trying to simulate what it's going to look like.
Well, I think everybody that's involved, including your computer specialist, ought to stand there at Coal River Road and look at it and, and compare his images because they're, it's not right. I'm sorry. I mean, I, I spent, knowing that I was going to be speaking with you, I spent some time going to a lot of, driving to a lot of different places and looking. And when I saw those pictures, I apologize, I'm not, I, I'm not saying you're wrong or he's wrong necessarily. I'm just saying the pictures that we saw tonight are simply not accurate. That tower is extremely prominent and to the naked eye, it's not the same as the photos you showed. So anyway, that's, uh, that was, that's all I, I had for questions and comments. Thank you.
Anyone else, Andy?
Uh, just, how do you get the 143-foot blades up to the top of that narrow road without widening it or? Or do you bring them up by helicopter?
Yeah. Um, so there is one tight turn on that road that needs to get widened. And, uh, we had that conversation in Castleton two nights ago. Um, but the other turns are all manageable. A truck can get 143-foot blade up, up that road. There's one turn that, that needs some widening. The other turns, uh, are all manageable. And I, I'm, I'm not a civil engineer. I spoke with the civil engineers on Tuesday afternoon before going down to Castle and had the same discussion. And I was told we can get the blades up the hill, except for that one turn that needs, it needs a little cutting out, uh, to widen that, that one hairpin turn.
Thank you.
Norm?
I just wanted to get a little clarification on the statement that you made earlier on, a reassuring one that it was your folks' position that this does not threaten habitat. And, um, I, I, I guess I'd like to know with a project of this size with blades, uh, spinning at an undefined speed, how it can't have some impact on habitat, uh, on both animals, birds, et cetera. And so I wonder what that's based on.
Sure. Um, so we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago with the Rutland County Audubon Society, uh, and we're obviously very concerned about the bird population, particularly because you've got the West Rutland Marsh there below the knob and they're concerned about bats as well. And it's actually bats that are more endangered than the birds are, uh, for the most part. Um, so we're looking, we're going to have to be studying, uh, according to the Agency of Natural Resources Guidelines, very carefully, the expected impact on birds and bats. If we look historically at what has, the data's been collected in Lowell and Sheffield. If we look historically at what has the data has been collected in Lowell and Sheffield and Georgia and Searsburg, uh, and the average annual avian fatalities have been between two and 12 a year per turbine. So let's, let's say 10 per year, uh, would, based on Vermont's history, uh, with other wind turbines, we could assume that uh, maybe 10 birds and 10 bats a year are to get, get killed by, uh, the turbines. Um, we have to do a very site specific analysis, right? I mean, Rutland County Audubon Society said, well, you know, Lowell's Lowell, this is grandpa's knob, and we've got the marsh underneath it. Um, and the birds are different and they're more populous. So we have to, we have to do that analysis. And all that is going to be, you know, that's, that's information that, you know, becomes part of our permit application. So I can only sort of look at the, the history of, of wind turbines here to make some projec- projections. So that's, uh, and it just, I mean, to compare, right? There are over a billion birds a year that get, you know, killed by cats and get killed by flying into large glass windows at car dealerships. There are hundreds of million of birds who get killed from electrical lines. Um, so turbines, yes, there could be 10, 50. I, I don't know exactly where that's, we have to study, but relative to the other primary threats to bird and bat habitat, which the Audubon Society says the primary threat to bird habitat is climate change. The American Bird Conservancy says the primary threat to bird habitat, uh, is habitat loss. Uh, meaning they don't have a place to breed and we're not removing any of their habitat. So I'll, I'll stop there.
Just one quick follow-up question. Um, the various other projects that you just referred to are multi turbine projects, uh, or any of them have, uh, blades the size of this?
They're all larger.
Larger, larger windmills, pardon me?
Yes. Yeah. So Georgia mountain is a two and a half megawatt.
Um, I don't mean the production, I mean, size of blade.
Yeah, yeah, those are, those are, those are bigger.
Thank you.
Because a, a bigger blade produces a higher output.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from mission? So we, um, so I guess we have a couple of questions, um, that we'd love to have you get back to us on, at least a couple. Um, there were the, the sites 18 and 19, whether they can be simulated.
Yep. And, yeah, go ahead.
The, the difference at night between the communications tower and the wind turbine. Uh, were there any others?
Jury's, jury's concerns.
It doesn't matter. I mean, just, just observations. They weren't questions, I guess.
So we'll certainly be coming back with information about the sound. Uh, that's not something that I can respond to now, but I can, I can certainly address, uh, you know, trying to get a visual simulation from either side, 18 or 19, neither one of those is probably going to be representative of, of the other, um, and trying to get a better sense of at nighttime, uh, what this might look like. I think that's a totally fair question. It's more relevant for the towns that are beyond the five mile view shed.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And maybe some sort of simulation in that regard. What it looks like at night. Okay. Well, thank you so much. Very, very interesting. And I'm sure we'll be, uh, we'll be meeting, we're having you meet with us again as you work through the progress and, and work through, uh, the studies that are needed and all that.
Yep. So yeah, we're, we're now launching all these studies, all right, with, with the Agency of Natural Resources. We do the scoping meeting in January. We'll be doing bird and bat surveys through the summer, right? They're very migration time specific, right? Where we have to collect data. Um, Green Mountain Powers doing their study, the Geotech. By May, we should have a fair amount of, of sort of the engineering and information. And sort of by September, we'll have more the environmental impact information, just because it's, it's seasonal in terms of when we can do this kind of work. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to come to any one of your meetings and, and, uh, give you an update to what, what we have in terms of information and, and again, to, you know, if you have questions and I don't have answers to, I'm going to try to find out the answers to them and get, get back to you.
Great. I can't ask for more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And I'll sign off then, let you get on with your meeting.
Okay. Happy holidays.
Okay, you too.
Thank you.
Okay. So we can, um, that's it for new business. We can skip over Velco, as I mentioned earlier, and move down to old business. Um, kind of gave kind of a formal title to this first item. Um, but it's, 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 you know, the beginnings of our committee process of looking at new ordinances. And we decided to work on a building or construction one first. And I reached out to Vermont League of Cities and Towns, um, for some advice on that. And I, I think you've all received that email back, uh, which was somewhat complicated. Um, and, but gave us, gave us some options, um, for moving forward. So I don't know, um, Andy and, and Norm, if you have much to report out. Um, and if not, there's a select board meeting next week if you want, um, any guidance from them on anything, we can, we can certainly have that as a topic of discussion this evening. Andy, anything?
Norman and I met, uh, we didn't meet. We, we talked on the phone twice and gone over it and looked over the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, uh, and read that. And right now we're really thinking that until we see some more background from possibly Kevin Brown reviewing um, what's been sent down by Vermont leagues and cities and towns, we're not really, there's really no place we can really go. Uh, maybe Norman can elaborate a little better on that for me if you would.
Norm, do you want to?
Yes, um, Andy summarized it very well. Um, I read this letter three times. And each time I came away with a different take. Because it's in terms that are sort of repugnant to the town's history, meaning the word zoning is used throughout. Uh, it, uh, I, I just think, you know, we talked about a zoning bylaw and then zoning ordinance and you can't, I'm not sure what the, the difference is clear. Um, I'm, I, I think that I wouldn't want to proceed unless I had some guidance from Kevin Brown, particularly given the enforcement provisions or enforcement comments made, uh, in the letter from the League of Cities and Towns. So I'd like, I think Kevin's view as to, whether he agrees with it, whether it's appropriate guidance for us. And secondly, since we're talking about, and he talked about a zoning bylaw as opposed to a zoning ordinance. And talk about enforcement being a necessary part of it. That, and that it has to be, uh, through an appointed official. And, um, and we don't have that kind of structure except for Bill, and he's overloaded now. Um, as to how the select board would react to something that required additional enforcement. Because if they're not ready to do that, then I don't know why uh, the commission should spend a lot of time on it. So.
Yeah. Okay. I, I'm, so I'm not really clear what to ask Kevin Brown because as I read that email, uh, and it took me a couple, several times as well, um, he gave us, um, three choices, three options for trying to get a handle on building in town. One was to come up with a building code and that would need a building inspector. Another would be zoning and a bylaw, and he calls our subdivision ordinance a bylaw. So I, I, I think it's, bylaws just a, a formal term for regulations or, or statutory term. Um, so those, those two, and the third option was to amend our subdivision bylaw. And, um, and put in, assign an administrative officer. Or, and/or, these are interchangeable, a, a zoning administrator. And it gets a little more complicated than that with statute. Um, that, that's just the start.
What was the second one again? I'm sorry.
The, the second one. First one was, was come up with a building code and, and enforce that through a building inspector. The second one was, uh, zoning bylaw. Uh, and the third is to amend our subdivision bylaw, he called it, our subdivision regulations ordinance, which we've talked about anyway, but it wasn't at the top of our list. And, um, the first step there would be to comply with new statute and put in an administrative officer, which is also, it's the same thing as a zoning administrator. Uh, because that's the new statute, we're grandfathered in there. Um, but he suggested that might be the, the third option for us to, to kind of get on top of some of the issues that we see around town. In that third one, once you start getting into zoning administrators, you get into another level. And that's, that's where you get into develop, development review boards and zoning boards of adjustment, you know, the judicial part of all this. So the little bit of a slippery slope there. Um, but he gave us those three options. So I'm not sure, um, Kevin will have much to say about that. Our town attorney. Um, what, what specifically do you want to ask of him?
Well, Kevin is more familiar with the culture of the town. And I just don't, from everything I've heard and all of this was before I joined the board, Andy said he came in at the tail end. I don't know if anybody else was serving when zoning came up, but that seems to be a, uh, a concept that has been rejected. And there's little interest in it anymore. And if that's the path we're taking, um, in either number two or number three, um, I guess I want some sense as to how we could proceed so it would be accepted.
Well, yeah, Kevin definitely cannot answer that for us. Um, and first of all, did everyone else read that email the same way I did, the three options?
Sort of, but I read the third option as like, no matter what we, what changes we make going forward by Vermont law, because we have subdivision regulations, we should have the administrator of offer, officer, even if we don't have zoning.
Right. That was my interpretation as well, Mary Beth.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, yeah, I meant to say that.
I, I also.
We are grandfathered in, but he thought it'd be a good thing.
I also thought the first option did not solve our problem, uh, at all. It, it was almost an after, after we knew that there were plans to build, then we could, we would have some code to be, uh, that people to be held with, but, but without having some mechanism for us to identify that there's some construction or something going on, we, we wouldn't even know how to start applying, uh, our, a code. So it, it, it seemed like it was just not, not something that we're thinking about at this point.
And I think he also, didn't he also speak, or maybe I read it when I looked at the, um, no, I guess, didn't he also speak about the various state agencies that oversee, uh, the electric systems, the wiring, the plumbing, there's some various state regulations that have to be met. And they're sort of delegated down to like Rutland City and that kind of thing that they have their own inspectors. So I, I didn't see the building code as helping what is addressing the issue that brought all this about was we have absolutely no oversight of new construction that doesn't go into act 250.
Yeah, he, you know, he did mention that the zoning bylaw, the second option could just address new land development. Um, yes, whether everyone hearing that message will hear it as, you know, we're being restricted to just that, or if it's, you know, a foot in the door. Um, or more zoning, I don't know. Any thoughts on that? You know, asking to do a very specific land development zoning bylaw.
When you say bylaw, what is the difference between a bylaw and an ordinance? I mean, we can have, I thought a bylaw was part of a, a, a larger scheme. That's my.
Yeah, I think, I think those words are used interchangeably too by people, but, um, if you're following statute, um, it's usually a bylaw that is the most regulatory and, and what follows state statute.
So a bylaw would be a zoning, a piece of local zoning regulation that has any number of sections, subsections, it's just not a one and, one page and done. It would be a comprehensive zoning regu- zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we could still call it an ordinance, like we call everything an ordinance right now, and, and some of them are bylaws.
It confused me. I read it three times. Um, well, perhaps we ought to reread it with the way you have congealed it and condensed it for us and come back next time. Um, with, well, I, I still am concerned about whether, what kind of enforcement the town is prepared to adopt, fund, engage in. Um, because if it's not, uh, willing to do that because it's going to cost too much, then I would not like to see us spend a lot of time on this. If, if that's absolutely required by statute, I guess that's what I would like Kevin to confirm. That anything that we do, whatever we call it, uh, to have it enforced requires whatever the name is, inspector, administrator, whatever. And we don't have the infrastructure personnel wise to do that, and they're not willing to look at it. I, I just don't, don't want to see the commission, this commission waste its time.
Right, right. And that's, that's where I think regular communication with the select board would be helpful.
I'm sorry.
Howard, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say that, yeah, it's very doubtful that we're going to get there to get a zoning administrator and, and do all the things we want to do. But I just want to just mention that the building permit that we're using now has only been in place for a few years and, and it's really taken off and, and done a lot of good for the town and, and it's working. Uh, yeah, you don't get everything, but not everybody knows that it's out there either, but it, it is getting better and better as we go along. And, and every several years, you know, the town should be doing a reappraisal and updating, going, going through, you know, building to building to building and picking up all the new stuff and everything. So, uh, it seems to me that. it seems to me that you know, the building permit system that we've got now, just work with that to try to get the word out more and more so that everybody knows it's there. A lot of people don't because for so many years we had nothing, absolutely nothing. And now it's it's only been in place, I don't know if it's been three years, but at the most probably it it's that. So it's it's fairly new, but it's we are getting a lot of permits. I mean, they're coming in, we're not getting everything. But as a listener, I can tell you, we're getting a lot more than we were getting, you know, five years or more ago. That part has been working quite well. It's not perfect, but it's you know, it's a Band-Aid approach, I guess, as long as we're not going to be getting into, you know, zoning and getting a zoning administrator and all these other things. I just just wanted to mention that.
Right now, if I understand it, that is purely voluntary. Is that correct?
It is.
Yeah.
But I you say it's it's work, it's working and it's my opinion, it's it's getting better and better as we go along. Most people, once they know it's out there, people that they comply, they don't want to, even though they don't know really that it's something that perhaps they're going to get fined or whatever, whatever, we're not, we're not charging for them or anything. It's just the the permit to find out what's going on and and typically we're looking at the basically the build out of building, new homes or garages, add-ons and things like that is what we're we're looking for. Again, there's a lot going on with the state of Vermont with what's happened in this last couple of years with the market, which has gone absolutely crazy. The state is in a total uproar, not knowing where and and how we're going to go with with and when we will do the next reappraisal. On top of that, the state has changed the the system, the NIMRC system that we've had forever is we have a new outfit that's come in and and they're just getting their program up and running. So within within maybe another year and a half, it's going to be a whole complete different system with the state. And the state from time to time talks about different things like you know, doing you know, appraisals and whatnot countywide. And and other things. So there's there's a lot of things in up in here and a lot of moving targets. And I guess probably the best thing we can do is just keep working with the building permits we've gotten and just do the best we can.
Andy and Norm. Next step for you folks, a suggestion maybe to look at the building permit and see if it's if it isn't enough to give us more information, then we just review that. And then maybe we could try to find a few just zoning, land development zoning bylaws. Could go through some of the regional planning commissions and see if there's any towns that have done just that.
That would be helpful. I'm not ready to back away at all. And I am curious to see, I don't think I've ever seen one of these building permits that we have and what the what the local what rotten town has that authorizes us to do that, to have that permit. Where where's the authorization for it in our local ordinances? So that would be a place to start anyway.
It's probably authorized by the state.
Anyway, if if Bill, if Bill could send to Andy and me a copy of the permit and any other explanations that go with it, just send it by email, that would be at least get us started.
Norm, it's it's on the website and in the permit, it says where to go to find the requirement for the permit itself.
The permit is on the under permits?
Yeah.
Okay. I will look at it. Thank you.
Yep.
Andy, does that sound okay?
Oh, it sounds just fine. We'll just we'll see what we can do on and see if we can make any changes to the, you know, to the permitting part, the requirements for possibly broaden them if we could. And we'll go from there.
It's a good place to start and we'll look at the sort of the organic basis of it.
Yeah, and maybe
I will
More communicate it more. Well, I'm sorry.
All right, I was gonna say for for Norman and Andy, I'll be happy to to work with them on this too. So.
Oh, great. Thank you. Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you. Good.
Hey Barbara?
Yes.
As advertised, I'm going ahead. My head out. Everybody have a Merry Christmas. And I would appreciate everybody indulging my rant. And I realize I had some personal thoughts in there and I apologize for that. What I would love to see though is see a realistic view of that for everyone. It simply isn't. So.
Are we on the wind tower again?
Yeah. But I got I got ahead. I appreciate everybody indulging my little rant there.
That was no red jury.
There's nothing to apologize.
Everybody looks at that picture and I think just drives the Colorado Road and looks, it doesn't look anything like what that picture shows. So therefore, maybe all of us by the next time we have a couple of meetings or it comes up again, we'll all like look over there and look at Grandpa's Knob Tower and imagine what something that dwarfs that tower in in scale is going to look at, not what those pictures showed. So anyway.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry.
All right.
And thanks for driving around.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holiday, Jerry.
Okay, um let's move along. A report from Select Board meetings, a lot of budget work. Nothing really specific to us. In the last couple of meetings, they do want a presentation on the Pocket Park next week. So I'll I'll do a little show and tell with them. Not much new to report to you folks about that. We're we're still trying to set up a meeting with GMP about getting some sort of easement or something, you know, access to that land. And we're still waiting for the archaeological analysis of one of one of the specific sites they're looking at is pretty much right at the Pocket Park. But since, you know, that is, you know, so flood prone. I really don't think there's going to be much archaeological significance there. So hopefully that's the case as as far as, you know, getting this park to progress on track.
Do we have an idea whether we would, whether we want an easement or some other form of
No, Bill, do you have any insights? I mean, I've I I haven't heard the Select Board or Mary really mention a preference there, have you?
No, they they haven't.
And I I don't, you know, I guess a purchase is another option, but.
I think they'd be much more in favor of easements and and agreements than purchasing. Our gift is probably not going to be in the cards right now.
It'd be a gift also.
It'd be a gift, yeah.
Well, we could, you know, we could definitely, you know, you know, portray GMP's history there too. So they would have that added benefit.
GMP's got deep pockets and I would just keep them into this thing.
And yeah, they are. They are. And and I think I've mentioned they're doing their relicensing right now. So this is this is like something they they really want to put in their application that they're there's a pocket park, you know, there that could, you know, highlight GMP history and all that stuff.
And town history.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it's a it's a real plum for their application. Okay, um, any other announcements from anyone?
Um, would now be a good time to give a quick update on Northwood Park.
Now is
Okay. Sure. Not a ton to report, but um uh, we need an Act 250 permit for the improvements at Northwood Park. The mountain bike trails are proposed that I can't remember the timing. Uh, but the Select Board approved um putting in the mountain bike trail network um, this upcoming year at Northwood Park. Um, so in preparation for that. Um, so we know that we need an Act 250 permit. And I helped Mike Rowe do an initial draft for Act 250 and sent it to Mary to review. And then the next step is going to the state for a project review sheet. So Mike had already reached out to Act 250 and then they gave the determination that the permit amendment was was needed. So I know that they know that need that. But we may need an erosion control um, permit or other permits. Probably no other ones, but we'll see what the state comes back with on that because they make the final determination. So we've been trying to come up, what would they really need for that project review sheet is just specific numbers. So how many square feet? And it's going to be impacted by the trail. Um, so is my main role is kind of talking with the uh, the person who came up with the design for the project, the mountain bike trail company and talking with Mike and like what specific details do we need about the trail construction to be able to answer state questions? And and so I think we're we have a pretty good start there. And then we'll hear, I haven't heard back from Mary yet, or you haven't heard back um, with her comments, but she is familiar with Act 250. Um, and I'm sure we'll have some um, helpful comments along those lines. Also, we're hoping to get the permits for the summer for construction, but I know Act 250 is pretty backlogged. Um, so we'll see on the timing, but that's why we're trying to get the application at least submitted in case it does take a while to get through the the process. Um, so Mike's going to give the Select Board an update on Tuesday and I'm going to try to call in just in case they have questions.
Okay.
Let's rear with that.
Does the current Act of 50 permit cover the whole, everything at Northwood?
So it it does. So any so there's Northern Park, about 100 acres are owned by the town and about 100 by the school board or the school district. Um, so, but they're all managed by the town. Uh, like the disc golf, existing disc golf is actually on the school property. So that was one of the discussions we were having. Um, because there is one trail that's proposed on the school property. Should we focus just on the town or also bring in the school? Um, but Mike was thinking that we should just include the school and not worry about that. But it is two different properties. Um, so I don't, I'm not sure about this school side Act 250, but um, pretty much any kind of soil disturbance, it sounds like causes, um, will cause Act 250 to become involved and the existing permit needs to be amended. So that's why, even though it's just, you know, a couple of feet wide mountain bike trail through the woods. Um, they still have jurisdiction over it.
Mary Beth, it may require amending to Act 250 permits, the schools and the towns.
Um, that's a good point. Yeah, I mean, you need to look into into that one. Yeah, that one trail to see. Right. If there's a separate one, that is a good point.
Okay. Great, Mary Beth, thank you. Any other questions? Can't see the the members in the in the Select Board room too well, but
Still here.
There we go.
There's only three of them right now.
Okay, um, so we've got two minutes to do the minutes. So we can be out of here at eight.
Move to approve.
Good luck. Yeah.
Norm, they looked really good.
If you're happy.
Anybody gonna second that or?
Yes, I'll second it.
Howard beat you.
Oh, he did. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I had a couple little nits, but I'm willing, if everybody's in a hurry, I'll shut up.
No, go. Two little ones.
Okay. Page two. Number six, right at the top. Statutory authority without zoning will be an important guide. It just didn't make, didn't seem clear.
I think what was meant is statutory authority that doesn't include zoning. You know.
Hey Barbara, I was not at the meeting. I read that and this is the way I interpreted it. That if we don't have zoning, we need to refer to statutory authority in order to have any type of regulatory power. So for me, it seemed clear. I I don't need to make any changes to that. And I wasn't at the meeting, wasn't part of the discussion. And if that interpretation was right, and I got a thumbs up from for Bill who wrote them.
Okay. Um. The other, under announcements, number three. Second sentence, Rotman Town was mentioned as a town which would have a visual impact. And I thought it should say a town on which it would have a visual impact. Made more sense, but that's it.
Okay. Bill, I don't know how you missed that one.
I'm sorry. You don't know what?
We're chastising Bill for missing that one. Okay, um, so who made the motion?
I did.
And are you willing to accept these amendments?
I'll I'll accept the
The the changes
The friendly amendment.
And the second?
That was Howard.
I'll second that.
You can't.
Yeah.
That's fine. I've seconded it. That's fine. I'll go with
Oh, excuse me.
He was the one who seconded by original. So he has to be willing to second the the friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Norm helps to be in the room, you know, you can those of us not in the room, we're a little, you know.
Left out. We're left out.
All those in favor? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, well now.
I didn't, I abstained because I was not present. I was just facilitating the minute task. Thank you.
Anything else or does anyone want to make motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.